I call the order, the joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority for November 3rd, 2015. May we have roll call for the City Council?
Council members divine?
Here.
Friedman?
Here.
Garpadian?
Here.
Sinanian?
Here.
Mayor Najarian?
May I have a roll call for the Housing Authority, please?
Authority members divine?
Here.
Friedman?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Crozier?
Here.
Sinanian?
Here.
And Chair Garpadian?
Here.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the November 3rd, 2015, joint public meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority was postponed on Thursday, October 29th, 2015, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. The first item?
First item is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding 2015 homeless continuum of care funding application to HUD. 1A is Authority Motion Approving 2015 Homeless Continuum of Care Program Priorities, authorizing City Manager or Executive Director to submit the application to HUD for continuum of care program funding under the 2015 Continuum of Care Homeless Assistance Notice of Funding Availability, 2015 NOFA, and authorizing City Manager or Executive Director to execute the necessary documents with HUD and sub-recipient or service providers related to the 2015 application for fiscal year 2016-17 programs.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. As Yvette Sambelli, our Community Services Manager, comes up to give you a brief presentation, by way of introduction, I can tell you that as we prepare our NOFA to HUD, this is a program area that's in flux. As HUD continues to apply its own best thinking to programs and services that we provide at the local level, we're seeing an increasing and pronounced transition to a Housing First strategy whereby our priorities and our services that we provide are being impacted by the priorities of HUD. And Yvette will tell you a little bit about that, particularly as we look to swap out a couple of the different programs that we have, not so much as a reflection of their relative priority to Glendale, but rather our desire to try to best match what our community does and does well with the thinking and priorities as established by HUD. That sounds like a little bit confusing, but I'm sure Yvette will straighten that out most certainly for you in just a second. The other thing I would leave you with is to consider this discussion as something in two parts, that we will pick up the second part in your next agenda item as it pertains to CDBG. So with that, to talk about the Notice of Funding Availability and how our continuum of care will adapt to the evolution that HUD provides to us, Yvette will give you a brief overview. Yvette?
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa, Chair Garpadian, members of the Glendale Housing Authority. This report is City's annual homeless continuum of care funding application to HUD. Since 1996, the City of Glendale has been receiving continuum of care funding on behalf of the Continuum of Care formerly known as the Glendale Homeless Coalition. Through the annual competitive process, the City of Glendale has been receiving over $38 million of funds to support exclusively for homeless programming, including case management, housing, and services in the City of Glendale. This year, there are 11 existing projects in the Glendale Continuum of Care that are eligible for renewal funding under the 2015 Continuum of Care application. In addition, the City of Glendale is eligible to apply for one new continuum of care planning project and one new permanent supportive housing project for which serves chronically homeless individuals. The City of Glendale is one of only three cities in the city, county of Los Angeles that operates and is its own continuum of care and is eligible to receive services through the federal government through this competitive process. The other two cities in the community is City of Pasadena, City of Long Beach, and the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority is the third jurisdiction that oversees cities and counties under the LOSUS Continuum of Care. The federal government HUD looks favorable on systems of homeless delivery that are planned and implemented by broad-based coalitions as the Glendale Continuum of Care Committee represents. The Glendale Continuum of Care Committee is representative of advocates, homeless, alumni's, business, community partners, landlords, nonprofit organizations, congregations that support the efforts of the Glendale Continuum of Care programming. HUD encourages the submission of a consolidated application in which one applicant is the lead as part of different project sponsors in the geographic area. In this case, the City of Glendale Community Services and Parks Department is the lead applicant for this project funding application. The City coordinates all of the services through Essencia, Salvation Army, Door of Hope, Catholic Charities, YWCA, Path Ventures. These eligible organizations provide various programming within the City of Glendale. Under the Continuum of Care umbrella, on an annual basis, over 2,000 unduplicated homeless persons and families are served through more than one or two components. The complex services include from street outreach, coordinated entry to the system, which is Essencia, who has been designated as the City's coordinated entry to the homeless continuum of care, emergency shelter, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing programming, including rapid rehousing services. The details of those components of the continuum care is on page four of our report. In terms of the homeless count, HUD requires on an annual basis for continuum of cares to conduct an annual homeless count during the last week of January. This year, the homeless count was conducted on January 28th between 12:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. The homeless count is supported with efforts of all of the volunteers within the City of Glendale and the nonprofit organization providing services. As a direct recipient of HUD, the City is required to conduct this annual homeless assessment, which is the methodology used to be able to create and develop programs that is a priority for HUD and identify programming through this application process to apply for any new available funds. Based on the homeless count on any given night, in the City of Glendale, there are 208 unsheltered and sheltered homeless individuals. The demographics details is included on page three of the report. I want to cover a couple of detailed demographic characteristics that were identified, is that of the 208 individuals, 122 were individuals and 86 were persons and families. Forty-four of the 208, 21% were children under age of 18. 69 individuals met the definition of chronically homeless, which means these are individuals that are unsheltered in the City of Glendale that have been homeless for more than a year or have multiple episodes of homelessness. And 6% or 4% were veterans during the point in time count. The City of Glendale, along with the nonprofit organizations, eliminated veterans homelessness during 2014 program, and we continue to work with the veterans and prioritizing veterans for housing as that is one of HUD's priorities. 63 out of 208 were being homeless due to domestic violence services, and 52, 83% were women and their children that were domestic violence. As a result of the restructuring of the Glendale Homeless Continuum of Care and under the HART Act, the formerly Glendale Homeless Coalition was reformatted and renamed to Glendale Continuum of Care Committee and has a formal Board of Directors that was elected and established by the committee members. The Continuum of Care Board is comprised of Michelle Roberts, Chair of the COC Board from Glendale YWCA, Lieutenant John Gilkerson, Vice Chair of COC Board, Bruce Nelson, Glendale Adventist Medical Center, Diana Hill, Glendale Unified School District, Jerry Rodriguez, Mental Health Case Manager from Didi Hirsch, and Gail Farnsworth, who's our homeless alumni. The individuals selected to represent the City of Glendale Continuum of Care Board is a requirement of the federal government and must comprise of nonprofits or staff that are not receiving funding from the City of Glendale. In terms of program priorities, the new trend given from HUD, as Mr. Ochoa indicated earlier, is for communities to concentrate more on helping our traditionally chronically homeless or service-resistant persons who are on the streets and have no alternate housing programming. HUD requires and requests continuums to look at what's called Housing First models and identifying the participants on the streets, working with the participants placing them in the housing, and then providing all the structured programming and supportive services as a second priority. HUD's top priority under the Continuum of Care application is housing, permanent housing, and coordinated entry to the system, the HMIS program, and as a last priority is a transitional housing component. The Continuum of Care continues to look at alternate funding methods to identify the case management services or other coordinated services that is not funded through the federal government through the application process. In terms of the NOFA application process, this year, there are 450 Continuum of Care communities that will be applying for this funding. In anticipation of HUD's publication for 2015 application, the City of Glendale issued its request for proposal on September 28th and received 11 renewal funding on October 16th. On October 28th, the City of Glendale Continuum of Care Board of Directors interviewed each applicant, ranked the COC project renewals based on HUD's priorities. As in the past, the funding that COCs can apply for is divided into tiers, which project prioritizes, prioritizing Tier One are more likely to get funded than projects funded in Tier Two, and I will cover this in a little bit detail in a presentation. HUD is very confident that everything that is funded in Tier One, which is 85% of all the annual renewal projects that allocates about $2 million under Tier One, will get funding. However, 15% of the total allocation of renewal project must be tiered and ranked in Priority Two, which does not guarantee funding from the Continuum of Care dollars. Based on these parameters, the City of Glendale is eligible to apply for $2.79 million. The calculation of the amount falling within each tier as reflected in the handout given to you at this moment represents 11 projects that total $2.12 million that were ranked in Tier One. May I get the presentation up, please? Thank you. So on October 28th, the Continuum of Care Board met and recommended project ranking based on HUD priorities, based on the continuum of care project performance, and based on eligible funding that the continuum can apply under Tier One and Tier Two. The original funding request allocated Hamilton Court Door of Hope Transitional Housing Program under Tier Two, Priority One, in the amount of $221,000, following the scattered site permanent supportive housing project and 2014 permanent housing project and Housing First. On November 2nd, the City of Glendale published its funding announcements online, and as a result of the announcements, received an appeal from Door of Hope Transitional Housing Project. Door of Hope Transitional Housing Project serves women and children who are fleeing domestic violence. They're requested to have the Continuum of Care Board to review and reconcile the transitional housing project and identify and rank the project in Tier One. As a result of the appeal, staff met with Door of Hope this morning and met with the Continuum of Care Board of Directors, including Essencia, and further reviewed the appeal and has provided and received Board approval for a revised recommendation to rank Door of Hope in Tier Two. And, I'm sorry, to rank Door of Hope in Tier One as a project priority 11. As a result, placing Essencia's coordinated entry project straddling $121,000, 631 in Tier Two, and allocating Scattered Side Permanent Housing Project, $188,000 for Essencia in Tier Two. Staff recommendation and Essencia fully support this change to the City of Glendale's Board recommendations, and this revised recommendation will provide important resource to keep the Hamilton Court Transitional Housing Project in the community, and staff feel strongly that coordinated entry system and permanent housing projects that are ranked in Tier Two, as it being HUD's priority, will get funded, as opposed if Door of Hope Transitional Housing was in Tier Two, that will not get funded. As a result of the recommendation, COC Board approves and recommends for City Council for consideration the revised funding application recommendations, ranking Hamilton Court in Tier One, and Essencia's coordinated entry and permanent housing in Tier Two.
I'm sorry, so they got bumped? Door of Hope appealed and went up, and then the Essencia coordinated entry system went to Two?
Yes.
Because it has a better chance of funding?
Under the rules that HUD applies, the priorities that HUD applies.
Okay. So both would get funded under this reorganization?
We believe that they have an extremely good chance of being funded, certainly better than if it were Door of Hope in that second tier.
I got you.
So I think what you see between the staff, the representatives of Essencia, representatives of Door of Hope, is truly the benefits of a network, a healthy network in a continuum of care, where they're trying to focus on what's best for the overall network versus what's best for an individual organization within the network.
Well, that was very big of them not to object to the, maybe they did object, but...
And as a result of Door of Hope tiering and ranking in Tier One, the Continuum of Care Board and Door of Hope has committed to convert the transitional housing project into a permanent housing project for next year's application process, which is HUD's priority for the upcoming fiscal year.
Can you repeat that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Can you repeat that?
Now, we're getting a lot of information, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, Vice Chair divine, members of the Housing Authority, the Door of Hope Transitional Housing Project this year will maintain its component as transitional and will be ranked in Tier One to guarantee the funding. Under the 2016 funding application, which is next year for fiscal year 1718, Door of Hope has committed to reallocate their transitional housing project to a permanent supportive housing project, which supports HUD's priorities and City's priorities in terms of providing permanent housing for homeless families.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure that was what I heard. Okay.
And so as a result of the revised recommendation, staff is here respectfully asking Housing Authority and members of the City Council to approve a motion, the revised funding recommendations for the 2015 Continuum of Care application program priorities, and allowing staff to submit the funding application to the federal government by November 20th. We do have Vice Chair Gilkerson here, and we have members of our Continuum of Care Committee and Essencia and Salvation Army and Door of Hope here to support and answer any questions if you may have, and I'm available to answer any questions.
I have a question. I'm looking at page two of staff report where it lists the fundamental components of the continuum of care system, and the one component that I don't see as a fundamental one is some kind of mental health care. And just if you look back at the last year in the City of Glendale, we've had several murders that have been committed by individuals suffering from mental issues. One of them, the very latest one, was a homeless person clearly with mental issues who, for no reason, attacked an individual with a knife and ultimately ended up killing him, and he died himself. So I want to understand how comprehensive our homeless program is, and to the extent that it doesn't have a robust mental health care component, I can't really call it a comprehensive plan. So can someone address that issue? And maybe Essencia and Door of Hope can have an input in this as well.
Certainly, I can give you some flavor for it, and then if we want to have the folks from Essencia or from our staff give additional context. I think to the extent, and you see it very evident here with the rankings and the tiers, we are trying our best to match the services that we provide with what HUD says that they want. To the extent that mental health counseling is integrated into the intake, into the case management, those are functions that are part of that entire exercise, but it is not something that's said alone, standalone, this is the mental health component of the continuum of care. And what you see from HUD increasingly is, you know, you do that as part of the casework that goes after you get somebody first into housing. Get them into housing and then try to keep them there. It's interesting that, and it's a little bit frustrating, I suppose, that the goal with the Housing First model isn't to matriculate folks out of that permanent supportive, and the supportive is the case management, which lends itself to the mental health aspect, although these are not clinicians necessarily that are doing the intake and are doing the case management. Many of them are trained social workers, masters in social work, what have you. The goal is not to matriculate them out into conventional housing, but rather just to keep them in permanent supportive housing. That in and of itself is the measure of achievement, and you say, wow, you know, how does that kind of push the ball down the field? At the end of the day, what HUD is focused on is, you know, that is ultimately, in some respects, the best that can be achieved, and from a functional, operational standpoint, still less expensive than having folks on the street dealing with them through police, fire, courts, jails, prisons, and what have you. And so it's kind of an acceptance of what reality is. I will also tell you, and really speaking to the other point that you raise through the Police Department with Chief Castro, is that we have applied and we are very close to having a master agreement with County Mental Health, that we will have a clinician embedded in the Police Department on a going-forward basis. And in collaboration with the Cities of Burbank and in the Cities of Pasadena, who are experiencing the same thing that we're experiencing and are bringing their own people on, we will stagger the times of those professional clinicians so that we have somebody hopefully on duty every day of the week, as opposed to just Monday through Friday, and we can be drawing upon that resource. That will get us closer to where you would like to be. But at this point, what you see is the weaving of mental health into these services, but there is not one thing here that will tell you this is mental health. That is part of the supportive service.
So what I'm hearing is that mental health is there, it's sort of hidden in there, but it's not being called mental health just because HUD isn't interested in calling it mental health care?
It's woven into the system, into the continuum that's there, and we are calling it what HUD is asking us to call it in order to fund it.
Okay. So, and if that's sort of the bureaucratic constraint that we have to deal with, I understand that, then the question becomes, what is it, what exactly are we doing to provide the type of care that many of these homeless individuals need to...
It is everything from as rudimentary as for the more chronic cases, making daily and every other day visits to them, to ensure that they are taking medication, to ensure that they are staying in the unit. What you'll find is people who aren't ready for housing will leave the unit, or they won't sleep on the bed, they'll sleep on the floor, they're not ready to sleep on a bed, or they'll sleep on the couch. They don't have anyone to talk to, maybe they are experiencing episodes of whatever the mental ailment is for them. Having somebody drive them to their appointments with mental health professionals, psychiatry professionals, getting their medications refilled, and being somebody who just checks in on them, tries to handle what they can handle based on their experience, based on their training, and then recognizing when you do need to get someone psychiatric help, getting them there. That is the major function of a lot of the casework, getting them, if there is an example of, you know, it's a tragic example, but it's an example nonetheless, the homicide that you reference, looking back at the case file, and now that the gentleman's deceased, I was able to review it for my own edification, the degree of times that the case manager is working with that individual to take advantage of a housing voucher that they have through the VA, and they just weren't ready. And the notes are actually very descriptive, and it's heartbreaking to read that this person just wasn't ready, and they knew they just weren't ready, and all the while they're slipping further and further and further away, until finally they just leave and are not associating with the case manager. And that's when we lose people, is they just go on the street and you stop connecting with them. For example, this particular individual would come back to, Essencia does have a program where they will act as a trustee for savings accounts for folks that are on the street, if they have their social security or whatever the case might be, and they'll hold that and trust for them. This person would come back and get money, deposit money, and then, and you can see it just slipping away and moving further away, and if that individual opts not to come back and will not be helped, that's that service-resistant individual that we have had, I will tell you that we have had a tremendous amount of trouble reaching that person.
And at what point and whose responsibility is it to determine that an individual who's sort of slipping away from the system, or whatever you want to call it, is becoming a menace to himself and society at large? And, I mean, is there such a thing as, you know, institutionalizing someone if they're dangerous?
Certainly, there is the 48/50 hole that we can put on people for 72 hours and take them to a hospital, sometimes it's Olive View Hospital out in the valley.
That's a temporary hole.
I mean, that's 72 hours. Sometimes that's all that's needed to stabilize somebody's dosage and their medication or to get them back on medication, but the person that is having that episode at least can be readily identified. The one that can't is somebody who is literally in the shadows and, you know, just is able to maintain just enough to not be recognized, to not be noticed until that last minute when the crisis occurs. Now, we're hopeful by having a clinician on duty between the tri-cities that when that call does go out, albeit in this particular case that you referenced, it probably would have been too late in that circumstance, but it might make a difference for somebody else. And to the extent that Essencia's caseworkers are actually very aggressive in an appropriate way in approaching people and just talking to people and forcing them to interact with another human being when maybe they may go a day or two without talking to another person at all, that is helpful to us in terms of the relationship. You see that Lieutenant Gilkerson is the co-chair of the continuum, that's not by accident. You know, there is a, for better for worse, there is a marriage of necessity between social services and police services, the soft power, the hard power relationship between them. And hopefully, and what we find in Glendale, you know, we've actually had more success than not of identifying those individuals, getting them some degree of treatment, and effectively triaging the wound for the time being.
So maybe we can hear from Essencia as to the type of service that is provided to those that are...
Thank you. I really, I appreciate the question, Natalie.
And Ms. Camaro, would you like to...
Fold that into my three minutes.
Yes, would you like to fold that in?
Sure.
So you can, you heard the discussion and the question, so please feel free to do that and then roll into your comments.
Salute.
Salute, if you'd like to.
Okay. So regarding the mental health part, we actually at Essencia had an onsite psychiatrist, onsite trauma therapist. We had to cut back on those positions because HUD's funding is increasingly toward permanent housing, reducing funding for services, and so that is a consequence of this trend at HUD where there is a belief that services should not be funded through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, it should be through HHS or other systems of care, to the point where in the NOFA language, they talk about how it's much more efficient for us to be getting funded from other funding streams, while we're still working on how to qualify ourselves to be a medical biller so we can get those psychiatric services reimbursed. We currently do not have a funding stream for trauma therapy or psychiatric services. We have a little bit of one for the trauma therapy, but it's not enough. So we're in a new world as it comes to homeless services, and these shifts have been really, really dramatic and frankly disappointing because we had a lot of flexibility back in the day for the supportive service-only project. For what you're also talking about, the reason we needed to have onsite psychiatric services is that it's very difficult to get people into the mainstream system. So Didi Hirsch is there, but it could take weeks to get an appointment. When someone's having a mental health crisis, you can't wait weeks. When they come out of a 72-hour hole, they may be medicated, the medication wears off, they may not take it again. So there's a constant need for ongoing maintenance, and I'm really looking forward to working with the Police Department as they partner with DMH, because I think that we can sort of help provide that glue in continuity of services. One of our case managers... One of our case managers does have a specialization in mental health care. She's familiar with procedures and medications and so forth. And so she is that intermediary between the mental health care system and our clients with mental health care needs. So we haven't cut back on that. I do want to speak to the continuum of care thing, because this question is really a matter of what HUD is saying it wants versus what Glendale needs. And when we were faced with this, we have already sacrificed over $160,000 from Access Center funding in prior years to put into permanent supportive housing in order to stay competitive. And we understand that that's important, as the continuum needs to exist as a whole. It's not just about Essentia. In looking at this particular year, when you look at the rules, it's very, very clear that the risk is much greater to Hamilton Court, to the Door of Hope project, by staying in tier two than it is for Essentia to have a little bit of its SSO CES project dropping down into tier two. And I went through and I crunched the numbers, I read the regulations to make sure I had it right, because I might be asking for a job next year if I don't. But I think that this makes it a strong proposal. This is a community that still needs housing and transitional housing for victims of domestic violence, and I think it would be wrong for us to put it down on the second level and say that it's something that we can sacrifice. It's also, that's an asset that this community has had for many, many years. We had looked at taking on the Hamilton Court project. Some of you who've been around back then know that when we were pathachieve Glendale, we had the opportunity to take it on, and at the time, we didn't feel we were prepared to do so. But Door of Hope did, and they've made a success of it. I think that they're an important element of our continuum of care. The strategy that we're looking at places lower risk for us at Essentia, and I think we're prepared to support this. And so I just thought it was important to be public about it, so you weren't concerned that we're in the back, you know, griping. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Did I understand you correctly, that you've had to cut back on professionals that provide on to health care, and that's not going to be remedied this year under at least the funding that we're looking towards applying?
It's not really even an option anymore. If you look at the HUD guidelines, they don't want to pay for mental health care.
Okay.
They're pretty clear about it, and they say, somebody else needs to cover that.
So who is, is the HUD department itself?
Well, we're looking at medical billing, which is not simple for an agency of our sort, but we're trying to figure out other strategies. For us, the onsite personnel is really important, because once you get someone in the van, it doesn't mean they're going to complete the ride to the clinic, even if you can get an appointment. So having someone onsite there at the Access Center is really important.
I agree, it's imperative to have someone onsite.
I just also want to say that every single agency that's on this list needs additional funding. It's not just Essentia. We've all been cut, and over the years, the leasing costs for these projects have never kept up with inflation. So it's just, that is the nature of our work. It all needs additional funding.
Ms. DeMare.
You know, one of my major concerns when I read the staff report, the first thing that came into my mind that I asked about was, you know, what is going to happen to transitional housing? Because I know that that's important, and that's important in our city. So now, I'm happy, thank you so much for putting Door of Hope into a position to be permanent housing in the future. Hopefully, that'll guarantee that they stay around. My question is about the mental health. If we get them into the, I guess the idea is to get them from the street to housing. If we get them into permanent housing, is there a way that perhaps Affordable Health Care Act, or one of those, something like that, will help them to get, pay for mental health providers?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Our clients, once they're in permanent housing, our clients are clients at Didi Hirsch. We do get them in and connected to the mainstream systems. It's that period before they move into housing where they're moving around a lot, they're not very stable, that's where the access to health, our mental health care becomes a lot more problematic and needs a lot more attention. So, yes.
And again, at the end of the day, they will not be onsite, so it's not like there will be someone there to always attend to them.
Right, they're in apartments in the community, so they're in the neighborhood, and...
But the case management goes from intensive, you know, very regular, almost constant, down to something that, based on the level of functionality, will start to move away as somebody becomes more independent.
Ms. Friedman?
Well, I just want to say that it's really a shame that the funding is constantly cut for these programs when there's such a great need. And we hear more and more about the crisis of homelessness in Los Angeles County, and this really shows, one of the reasons that we have such a crisis is because we're under-resourced and underfunded. And I just want to say that I think it's really incredible that when you have a group of nonprofits like this, who are all competing for this very limited amount of funding, that your commitment to the clients that you serve is so exceptional that you've sat down and come up with a strategy to try to get the most funding to where it is needed the most, regardless of who it's going to. And the natural inclination is that you would just all fight for as much as you can get, because you're paying for support staff and you want your programs to be successful. And I just want to acknowledge the amazing cooperative work that you're doing together to, you know, get that resource where it really needs to go. And I really admire that. I think it's wonderful to see that. We don't often see that, you know, when we do community development, block grant funding, you know, it's only natural.
Wait till the next agenda.
Everybody loves their program, and rightfully so, and they all want as much money as they can. And usually, it's people that are upset that they're not getting more money and are willing to kind of take potshots at other groups. But here, we're seeing the opposite, and I want to thank you for that and for having that very collaborative approach.
Well, I think that's part of what makes our jobs easier, is working together collaboratively, not treating it like a zero-sum game. I should mention that the Appropriations Committee in Congress is now looking at the budget. Have you seen this? I should send it to you. This is the week to be notifying our members of Congress about homeless funding, because the appropriation bills are under consideration, and we could use all the help we could get.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question from staff.
Mr. Garbedian?
I have a question from staff. I'd like to know, what is our total budget for this program, for homelessness program? Is it 2.7 million that we're applying for, plus what we get from CDBG, or we have other budgets that adds up to it?
Chair Garbedian, members of the Housing Authority, the funding under the continuum of care is $2.7 million. Likelihood of us getting all of that, we would be able to secure $2.3 million, less the new project budget. CDBG provides on an annual basis about $80,000 that supports Catholic charities, Essentia and Door of Hope, to provide some of the activities that is not eligible under the continuum of care program.
Okay. Let's say best-case scenario, if you get the 2.7 or 2.8 million dollars, and I'm looking at the CDBG fund allocation, there is a $24,000 to Essentia, Door of Hope, $20,000, the payments that it's due for a shelter project, $207,000, and another, that's roofing project. So altogether, it would be like $3 million, if we, best-case scenario. And if you have 208 homeless, identified homeless people out there, it's $15,000 a year per person, which is almost nothing. I would like to know what percentage of the homeless that we have out of that 208 use these programs? Is it all of them that they come in at one point, or is it just certain individuals that they come in on a daily basis? And what percentage of these funds go towards transitional housing? And what is our base cost of operation? Because we, they're nonprofit, I understand, but they have a base cost that they operate. What are those numbers?
Okay, just one second. Chair Garbedian, so the continuum of care application provides funding for $2.7 million. The $2.7 million is what HUD would cover for eligible expenses under each of these projects. Each of the nonprofit organizations have to provide 25% cash match contribution that is supported through and leveraged with CDBG programming. The continuum of care dollars allocate 5% of the administration of the 2.7 for staffing and administration to support the operations of the projects. About, of the 2.7 million, 250 is cost for administrative dollars that includes, that is shared with Essentia, all the nonprofit organizations and city staff.
250?
$250,000.
And that 5%, is that 250,000?
Yes, and that is shared with all the nonprofit organizations and funds one FTE of city staff position.
Okay.
CDBG program provides the cash match to a portion of, to support case management services that is not eligible under the continuum of care. And CDBG Capital Improvement Project also funds a portion of nonprofit organizations in terms of capital development. And I believe Moisés Correa or Mr. Duran will get to the details of the CDBG report. However, the funds that HUD allocates to continuums basically covers 50% of operations. A lot of our nonprofit organizations have to also leverage services like the mental health services, or clinicians, or general operations to be able to operate these programs at full capacity. For example, a permanent housing project that funds 12 units, there is a set fair-market rent that HUD will pay. Anything excess of the fair-market rent for a one-bedroom is covered by the nonprofit organizations. And that's in addition to the 25% match required to be able to operate the program.
Okay. And also, I know we have a program for seniors that the state provides funding for seniors to go, like to adult day healthcare centers during the day, and there's a certain amount that they pay. So they won't stay home and be lonely and get sick, and if they have some issues, they will be taken care of when they go to one of those places, like adult day healthcare centers. And it really helps the state in cutting back their...
The generators just kicked on, so we are not broadcasting, but we are recording. So if you would like to continue.
How many of them come to our centers to ask for help? Is all of them, or half of them, or?
Chair Garbedian, Essentia is our coordinated entry to the system of care. All of the 208 individuals have completed an intake and assessment through Essentia. Essentia serves over 2,000 individuals, and the individuals are then referred to proper services. That includes the emergency shelter, transitional housing, or permanent housing. Of the 208, we have about 70 unsheltered homeless individuals that Essentia's outreach case managers continue to work with the participants on the streets, ongoing basis, until we're able to identify housing units and coordinate the housing placements for those unsheltered individuals.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a card from Tim Peters. Mr. Peters?
Hi, good afternoon. Tim Peters, Executive Director of the Door of Hope. I thought I'd better at least come up and publicly acknowledge a thank you to you, as well as to Essentia and the city staff, to working together. And Ms. Friedman said it very eloquently of how we work together in a unity, to be able to serve the community that we love and that care for. It takes a team effort, and we are working together to stretch these resources, and to be very strategic about how to best present ourselves to HUD, to be able to get the maximum out of the funding. If Door of Hope was the most likely to be needing to be cut, to best the whole continuum, we would be willing to be able to, you know, bow to others. But we really, really appreciate the opportunity to be able to save this program, which you do see the chronically homeless are the most visible, but the hidden population of the hundreds of women and children and families and domestic violence that takes place in our community is a huge need, which we really, really need a resource for in our community. And so I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the families that we serve at Door of Hope, for this opportunity to work together, and thank Essentia, whose work is vital to this community. And I believe we are doing the right thing by being able to present to HUD this most likely way to be able to be funded and to maximize our resources for our community. So I just wanted to thank you and offer, if you had any questions for Door of Hope.
Okay, if we think of one, we'll call you up. Ms. Papazian?
So, first of all, thank you for the staff report. It was well done and just detailed report. And I have a question. Did the number of homeless population increase compared to the last year, or just the same?
Chair Garbedian, Member Papazian, the homeless count conducted in 2015 reported 208. In 2013, we reported 318. It decreased slightly in terms of 2015 homeless persons that are counted in the city of Glendale.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a question, and I don't, I'm asking this with all sincerity, I'm not trying to shake anyone up. Are we better off keeping our own continuum of care as opposed to joining the other 86 cities in the county under the LASSA model? Are we providing more, or would we be accessing greater funding, especially with this latest push we've heard from the city of LA, and the county is kicking in $100 million or committed funding? Are we better off doing what we're doing than joining the larger pool?
My favorite word is always depends. And I think what it depends upon is that if we were to join with LASSA, then you're competing with LA priorities, as you see in transit and other things you're very well aware of, certainly. To the extent that we are a subregion unto ourself and still enjoy a good working relationship with LASSA, vis-à-vis winter shelter, I think is probably the best example I can come to. I'd like to think that we have the best of both worlds, but I can tell you that if it's the council's direction, we can do that comparative analysis to see what we think objectively, where would our interests be better served? You would think that maybe you'd get a greater economy of scale if you were part of LASSA, but then again, you're competing with a much larger area for all those same resources. Are you more apt to tap those resources as your own continuum, or do you think that through LASSA, you can be heard with the same voice? My gut and my experience, after three and a half years in this continuum, having been in a city that was part of the larger area, is we're better off on our own. But again, that's my lay read on it from the outside looking in. I don't know, you want to add anything?
I think it's a valid question. We don't want to lose control. Obviously, with our own continuum of care, we maintain a certain large element of control as to what organizations we want to support and have maybe more direct input on theirs. We have more grassroots understanding of what our community needs due to the composition of the Board of Directors. But, I mean, when I heard about all this extra money that's being funded, presumably it's going to be going to LASSA. Are we, and certainly, we're part of the county. When the county puts in money, part of that should be our money as well. Those are our tax dollars at work. Are we missing out, or can we make a request for additional funding from that stimulus that appears to be going?
It would seem that the county money is more accessible than the city money. And in fact, there was a very bold policy pronouncement from the LA City Council, but it wasn't really backed up with any detail as to where that money was going to come from, or how it was actually going to be employed. And so I don't know that that's the model we would do well under. To the county, I would think... And I don't think that we're any less committed, and I would certainly like to see something from our Communications Department in terms of a press release and explaining this very sophisticated model that you've just spent 45 minutes explaining to us, both to the residents of Glendale and to the residents of our neighboring cities who maybe think Glendale does not do. There are cities that push this off and aren't as committed, I think, as Glendale is. So to the extent that we are doing good work, the Housing Authority and our staff and our partners in the community, I think that should be, I think that should be broadcast.
I think that's an inspired point, truly.
We're doing a great job here.
To the extent that we are trying to understand what the February and March work boot events would be, I think it's probably well worth it for this council and Housing Authority to go through the intake process at Essentia, to actually go through what other folks are going through as they're processed, as they're talking with those case managers, and give you that boots-on-the-ground type of look into the system. I think that's absolutely inspired.
So let me take that line of questioning a little further. Are the municipalities that are functioning under LASSA having the same type of disconnect between the amount of, or the type of funding that's being provided for mental health care as opposed to the concentration on actual resident, providing, you know, short-term and long-term residents for homeless people?
I can tell you that my experience would lead me to believe that, on the mental health, most assuredly, because it's a regional issue. It's something that happens all throughout Southern California, not just in the LA area, but all the way from Santa Barbara to San Diego. But I can also tell you that with respect to the actual placement, to the permanent supportive housing, that is much less certain because you don't know where those facilities are. And by law, you can't know. There's a reason why group homes and a number of congregate care facilities aren't necessarily permitted and regulated by local governments, because local governments wouldn't want them in their neighborhood. And so when you do hear about a group home, suddenly every, you know, you kind of move the anthill and everyone gets excited. Having your own continuum and knowing where these different facilities are and what the impacts are or are not on the neighborhood, again, I think gives you that degree of confidence that you're doing something about it and a realistic, a real-time knowledge as to what the true impact is and also what the true need is in the community.
No, I understand that going with LASSA, which is no one's entertaining that idea right now, just sort of exploring what's out there, would entail giving up a lot of control. But my question is more, you know, specifically, are they having the type of problems in terms of being able to provide onsite mental care, mental health care that we are having? And it seems like we're pretty helpless right now because no one, I didn't hear anyone say, oh, by the way, there's funding coming to reinstate the full-time onsite person at Essentia. I didn't hear anyone saying that.
The system, the system is entirely underfunded, entirely underfunded. And we lurch from crisis to crisis. When something bad happens, we also are going to do something. And then oftentimes, because it doesn't flow, or it is increasingly less likely to flow from the feds, less likely to flow from the states, it does become a local issue. So the county is to be commended for taking some degree of ownership. But I think increasingly what you are going to see is that there is a local, there's a local address to the issue. I won't say a local solution, because I don't know that there's enough funding in the system, but there is a means to address it on a more meaningful level at the most local level.
There will be ways to address it?
It would be better addressed at the local level than from any other level.
Okay. Well, we've got to start thinking about addressing specifically this mental health care issue. Because I think one without the other is incomplete and leads to bad results.
I agree.
Okay. Any... Are you ready for a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes. Is there a motion for, to move 1A?
Mr. Chair, just briefly, if it could be a motion with the revised staff recommendations and rankings, so that's included as part of the motion.
Okay. I will move the, I will move 1A with the recommendation of the rankings as amended.
Second.
All call, please.
Authority members, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Papazian?
Yes.
Sinonian?
Yes.
Chair Garbedian?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Next item, please.
Item two is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding status of program planning for the fiscal year 2016-17 CDBG ESG and Home Annual Action Plan. Two A is a council motion approving fiscal year 2016-17 CDBG program priorities. A fiscal year 2016-17 proposed CDBG funding allocation plan by funding category and issuance of an RFP to the community and city departments for CDBG social services and to the community owners for CDBG capital improvement projects.
Mr. Ochoa? Yes, sir. This part will seem very familiar to you as we do it each year with respect to the program priorities and then the issuance of the RFP. And we come back later and after evaluating all these submissions, make recommendations to you. The wrinkle, and Mr. Duran will give you some overview of the process just by way of refresher, but there's also a wrinkle that we want to update you on, as I kind of teased at the first part of the last presentation, with respect to capital allocations as part of the CDBG funding and advice from the CDBG Advisory Committee as it pertains to city projects and city programs. As you know, the committee and even the council has for some time wondered when the appropriate time would come for the city to stop funding CDBG census tract code enforcement through the capital allocation that is here as part of this funding through CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant Program. And as you have seen over the last several years, and it's been mirrored by what you heard from Natalie Kamura and Tim Peters, the funding overall for all of these programs from the federal government has continued to shrink at an alarming rate. To the extent that our code enforcement program in, as it shrinks as part of this, the census tracts where we can use these CDBG dollars for those code enforcement officers, that becomes increasingly problematic to keep track of and less functional because they can go fewer areas within the city. I would submit to you that perhaps the time has come for the city to reprioritize code enforcement back to the city's budget. Now, does that mean that there's an additional $370,000 just floating around in the general fund that we could apply to anything? No. I'm not saying that we are awash in operational dollars in the current fiscal year. I'm saying that if the council and the Housing Authority Board were so inclined to repurpose dollars that had been going towards code enforcement away from code enforcement and which can only be used for capital expenditures, not for social services, then perhaps the time has come to, and several of you have put your finger on it already, perhaps the time has come to use those capital dollars to further invest in homeless solutions. And one of those homeless solutions, as you heard Yvette Samvelian outline for you, is the Housing First program and concept that HUD is pushing. We believe that if we were to take that $370,000, try to leverage that with additional monies for homeless and mental health purposes, that we could provide, at the very least, begin to develop a funding source to go and purchase a piece of property, either an apartment building or some other multi-unit type of building, that we could ultimately use as permanent supportive housing, knowing and trusting that HUD would continue to fund either debt service or the supportive services up to and including mental health services that would help us more readily impact the chronically homeless in this community. You don't have to decide this today, but we wanted to make sure that you knew that this is something that the staff is considering, because by the time all these RFPs come back, it will be springtime, and the recommendations come to you, it'll be springtime, ready to talk about budget and budget priorities. And if we were to pivot code enforcement away from CDBG funding into the general fund, I think we need to be very clear about what we would expect to do with those dollars that had been reserved for city code enforcement, and also be equally clear with the nonprofits who might otherwise want the council to allocate that $370,000 to very worthwhile projects, I'm sure, at their respective facilities. Again, not social service dollars, only capital dollars. That's what we're talking about here.
Monies for code enforcement in South Glendale?
Correct.
Where would we, where would we find the money to backfill? What's being taken out?
Within, it would be within the general fund, and you would, in the, at least in the coming year, if we are able to pull even, we might be a few hundred thousand dollars out of balance in that coming year. Now, a few hundred thousand dollars on a $180 million general fund budget, that's something, I think, as a matter of policy, the council may say, that's important enough to go, to move in that direction. The slippery slope, of course, is we start to say that too often, and next thing you know, you're deficit spending millions of dollars. So it would have to be a very, very thoughtful, judicious, sober decision from the council to say, we're willing to pivot at this time and repurpose those dollars from code enforcement towards something else. If we weren't going to do something on the homeless services front, my recommendation to you, my strong recommendation would be to continue funding code enforcement and not jeopardize the balance of the general fund, even if it were to the few hundred thousand dollars. If the council were to hold up an even higher public policy priority, i.e. homeless services, then perhaps that's worth it, but ultimately, that's the council's choice, not mine.
Okay. But I'm assuming the CDBG funding this year, like the previous four years, we're going to see some type of a decrease of funding from HUD?
I think you will continue to see that on the social service side. I think you will continue to see it in those areas, as was evidenced in the last presentation, that do not meet, that do not comply with HUD's sentiments about what their priorities are, what the national goals are. And right now, code enforcement is not one of the national goals. Permanent supportive housing is. So there are a number of points of light that seem to be converging on making a decision, if not this year, probably next year, if we are going to preserve that funding for Glendale.
But in absolute terms and absolute numbers, Mr. Duran, maybe, maybe, are we going to see a decrease in HUD funding for CDBG programs?
Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council, Chairman Garbedian, members of the Housing Authority, it's more likely that we will see a continued reduction in community to development block grant funding. That's been the trend consistently for the last seven or eight years. For the first couple of years of that trend, there were significant reductions of 30%, 35% in a given year. What we're projecting for fiscal year 16-17 is a 3% reduction from the current year. So it's leveled off...
3%?
3%. So it's leveled off a little bit, but one of the things I was going to report is that our current estimate for community to development block grant funding for fiscal year 16-17 is $1,540,000. And that's down from our healthiest entitlement allocation, which was about eight or nine years ago, of four and a half million dollars. So it is down significantly. So if I may, the gist of this...
If I can just interrupt you before we get into your, the priorities. The only thing that bothers me, just in a general sense, is that I think the general fund faces two serious threats in the next few years. One is the, I don't even, I don't even want to mention it, these threats, but one is the lawsuit on the transfer. The other is a possible UUT tax repeal. So to the extent we can preserve some services and unburden them from the general fund, that's something in my mind that I'm thinking, even though the administration of it is cumbersome, you know, when we're in a worst-case scenario, we're going to be cutting programs, we may be forced to cut programs, police, fire, libraries, and all this, at least a part of our code enforcement in South Glendale would remain intact if it's funded by CDBG. And that's just a thought. I know it's part of a larger discussion we're going to have.
And you're not deciding on it today?
Right.
We want to make sure that we plant that seed so you know that it's an option that's out there come the return of the RFPs.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Duran, you were ready to begin?
No problem. Mayor Najarian, and you will note on the proposed preliminary CDBG funding allocation plan by funding category for fiscal year 16-17 continues to include as a pre-designated project reflecting one of city council's priorities, the code enforcement program in Southern Glendale. So it's still in the plan as a pre-designated project for $370,000. But what I wanted to touch on today, as Mr. Ochoa has spoken about, is the CDBG Advisory Committee continues to express and argue that perhaps CDBG code enforcement should be funded by the city or prioritized by the city using the general fund funding source in order to free up that amount to the community under the request for proposal for community capital improvement projects, which would allow the nonprofit organizations to be able to apply for more substantive improvement projects to their community centers. So that was the discussion that led Mr. Ochoa and I bringing this up to the City Council at this time. But before we get there, again, the gist of today's report is to focus on the community to development block grant program and to ask for the city council's review and approval of the program priorities. The proposed funding allocation plan by funding category, which then set the parameters for the city to issue the request for proposal to the community for capital improvement projects and to the community and city departments for public social services. We have been operating the community to development block grant program and receiving funds from HUD for over 40 years. I think this is the 41st year. HUD does require the city to develop and file a five-year consolidated plan, which we did last year, which was approved by the city council and is on file with HUD. HUD requires a community-based needs assessment for both the five-year consolidated plan and the annual plan. So the greatest effort we made on that community input was last year in developing the five-year plan, where we received direct input from 377 Glendale residents. The Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, which is titled to commission appointed by the City Council, did review the community input, both for the five-year plan and the proposed annual plan, and has recommended program priorities, which are consistent with the program priorities identified last year as part of the five-year plan. And those priorities are listed in your report. So also each year at this time, in the program planning cycle, staff and the committee develop and recommend a preliminary funding allocation plan by funding category, which, as I mentioned earlier, establishes the parameters for the issuance of the RFP. That plan is reflected as Exhibit Four of your report. And as I mentioned earlier, represents a 3% reduction from the current entitlement funding for the community, Community to Development Block Grant Program, and includes $308,000 -- So the greatest effort we made on that community input was last year in developing the five-year plan, where we received direct input from 377 Glendale residents. The Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, which is titled to commission appointed by the City Council, did review the community input, both for the five-year plan and the proposed annual plan, and has recommended program priorities, which are consistent with the program priorities identified last year as part of the, of the five-year plan. And those priorities are listed in your report. So also each year at this time, in the program planning cycle, staff and the committee develop and recommend a preliminary funding allocation plan by funding category, which, as I mentioned earlier, establishes the parameters for the issuance of the RFP. That plan is reflected as Exhibit Four of your report. And as I mentioned earlier, represents a 3% reduction from the current entitlement funding for the community, Community to Development Block Grant Program, and includes $308,000 for planning, program management, and oversight, or for administration, $231,000, which represents 15% of the entitlement, which is the maximum that HUD allows for social services, and $1,001,000 for capital improvement projects. And within that funding category, $589,000 pre-designated for city projects. And currently, there are only two city projects. One is the Southern Glendale Code Enforcement Program, with an appropriation of $370,000. And the second is our Section 108 loan payment to HUD, the amount of $219,000 as a result of the $2 million loan we took from HUD a couple of years ago in order to be able to fund the Essentia Emergency Shelter and Access Center project. So this leaves $412,000 in undesignated funds that would be eligible under the request for proposal to the community to apply for improvements to community centers owned by the nonprofit organizations. The CDBG Advisory Committee did receive a presentation on the code enforcement program from the code enforcement staff, had a lengthy discussion on the merits of continuing to use CDBG funds for the code enforcement program. And as I mentioned earlier, would argue that it might be timely to consider releasing those pre-designated dollars as undesignated and available to the community to be able to offer more substantive community projects. However, notwithstanding the committee's trepidation, they did go ahead and recommend the funding allocation plan that is in your packet with the code enforcement programs still listed as pre-designated as one of City Council's priorities. So subject to your approval of the proposed funding allocation plan, we, the next step would be for us to issue the request for proposal to the community, receive the proposals in mid-December, package them, do a staff analysis, then forward all the funding proposals to the advisory committee. Then they take an opportunity to study the proposals, and then we will be prepared to interview the organizations and develop funding recommendations, and by this time, it's, it's the middle of spring of next year. So with that, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. But again, the gist of today is to ask for your approval of the proposed funding allocation plan and authorize us to go ahead and issue the request for proposal.
Are there questions for?
Yes, yes. Are there any other applications that were submitted, or these are the only ones that we received? The ones that are on the list, are there any, any other applications that we received?
The projects that you see listed are the current year projects that are funded. So, so the purpose of the request for proposal is to receive applications. We haven't received applications for fiscal year 16-17.
When is the deadline for it?
It'll be mid-December 30th.
December 30th?
Right. So if, if the council and authority authorizes to issue the RFP, then all eligible organizations prepare their funding applications and submit them to us on December 30th.
Okay. And I also have a question regarding the public social services that we provide. These are the programs that we have in parks and summertime, what kind of program? Because when I look at these numbers, we have $1.5 million budget, 20% is administration, 15% is public social services. That adds up to $553,000. And if you add that $370,000 code enforcement, it's $923,000. And when you add that loan payment of $219,000, then you are up to $1,013,000. So there is not much left for the rest of the smaller, you know, nonprofits to have any, there's $400,000 hardly left at the end of it. So, and I don't know, we pulled out $2 million on, and our payment is $18,000 a month?
Well, we pay it as a lump sum payment every year, and it varies between.
It's that's 9% a year?
207. I think last year was a little bit more, a little less.
It was less, it was 207.
It varies slightly from year to year. That's our loan payment to HUD.
And how many, how many years do we have left?
It's a 10-year loan.
What's a 10-year loan?
Right, so if you extrapolate this, yeah, we're paying interest of maybe, what?
Very small.
Uh-huh. Well, on, on $2 million, maybe $100,000. Do you know what our?
Over 10 years?
Yeah, over 10 years.
Okay.
2%? Okay.
So basically, it's a 10-year, 10-year term, so we have to pay it off in 10 years. That's why the mortgage is.
Correct. And I think this represents our third payments that we still have.
Okay. All right.
Did he define public services?
Yeah, the public services.
Social services.
The public social services, what are those, those services?
The, the only two city public social service projects that had been funded with the CDBG program was with senior services to provide a senior case management and the STAR Youth Program.
Oh.
The senior services allocation was $16,000, and the STAR was $13,000. And last year, you may recall, the City Council determined to go, not to go with the advisory committee's recommendation to continue to fund those two programs, but to release that money to the community for community social service programs and to, to make a special one-time general fund appropriation to, to continue to fund those two programs. So currently, we are reflecting them with, with no funding, but they would be eligible to submit a proposal for CDBG funding unless the council directs us otherwise, and the council directs us not to include any, any city department projects as eligible for social service funding.
So the public social service funding is not, okay, got it, it's not the city programs. Okay. Any other questions?
I forgot what my question was. I did. I don't remember what it was. Sorry.
Is there a motion for council to approve the?
I'll move the item.
Priority list?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sorry, member.
Council members, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And roll call for housing, please? Do we have to?
I think, Ms. Devine.
I just, so the, the question about the 200 and, or the $370,000 code enforcement money will come back to us when we receive all of the, the other requests. Okay, thank you. That was, I can decide.
May we have a roll call, please, for housing?
Was there a second for the Housing Authority?
Second.
Thank you. Authority members, Devine?
Yes. Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Brazian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Shergar Pedian?
Yes.
Item three on the agenda is Director of Community Development regarding Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act Public Hearing for California Public Finance Authority Proposed Issuance of Approximately $5 Million in Tax-Exempt Revenue Bonds in Support of Maple Apartments, Glendale Affordable Housing Residential Facility. That is being pulled, yeah?
Yes. Is it being pulled or continued?
Pulled. It will be continued.
To what date?
17.
So.
We need a motion?
November 17th? Yeah, a motion to continue to November 17th without further notice?
Second.
Roll call, please. For?
It'll be for?
Council or is that authority?
Either one.
For the council, it's for the council.
Council. Council members, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Is there a motion? I'm moved to adjourn authority.
So moved.
Second.
Adjourn.
Thank you.
We have a special meeting.
There is, there's a special meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Successor Agency.
Calling to order.